Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting. If you could just take a moment and silence your cellphones. Also, if you want to sign up to speak on any of the agenda items this evening, you can just make your way out into the hall and tell whoever is sitting at the desk out there that you would like to speak on an agenda item. All right, so now we're ready to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, everybody, just sit back and get ready for Proclamation Extravaganza. We have been bottled up with our proclamations, so we have several for tonight. And the first of our proclamations is National Police Week and May 15, 2025, being Peace Officers Memorial Day. And Councilmember Bo Hess is going to present this item, this proclamation. He requested the honor and privilege of doing this, but please let us let you know, we all honor you, but Bo wanted to do this one. And it makes sense because he is currently in police academy, Citizens Police Academy.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. So, the city of Asheville proclaims, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Asheville Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those inside the city of Asheville. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocents against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Asheville Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, North Carolina, do hereby acknowledge May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week in Asheville, and call upon its citizens and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and, in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and endearing reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Furthermore, I hereby proclaim May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Asheville, and call upon all citizens to recognize and honor those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to seal the city of Asheville this day. Thank you.
Definitely, I want to thank council. Thank you, Councilmember Hess, for reading the proclamation. And I really want to just thank each and every one of you for your support that you've given the Asheville Police Department. It is really making a difference. We are, it's making a difference in our retention. The officers feel the support, especially when you've taken time out of your busy schedules to attend our Citizens Police Academy, be able to form personal relationships, and really understand the inner workings of the Asheville Police Department. We have fewer officers that have resigned and are resigning. And thankfully, we have a bigger cadet class now. So, our recruitment efforts have drastically increased, and I really think that's due to the support that you've given us. We're getting ready to graduate 15 cadets from the academy. And just to let you all know, that's a class that is three times bigger than any class that we've had for the last five years. Now, we're very optimistic that we will have at least 20 in our next class. So, that's huge gains and great work by our recruitment and career development staff with Lieutenant Boy, Sergeant Morgan, and Captain McClanahan. So, again, thank you for your support. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you all for coming tonight. And Chief, thank you so much for all your work with all your men and women. And I know you give us a little credit, but you get so much credit for being such a great leader, and I think it's, obviously, we're seeing the results of that, so that's pretty amazing. Thank you. Thanks, you all. You're welcome to stay for the whole rest of the meeting. Continuing in our Proclamation Extravaganza and not entirely unrelated to the last proclamation, I'll be doing Asheville Beer Week, so whoever is here for that. Okay, all right. Don't shy away. Okay, here we go. Whereas the Asheville, North Carolina region is a national leader in the brewing and beverage making industry, which has achieved a growth rate of more than 300% over recent years. And whereas beverage makers in and around Asheville have nurtured their craft through careful and attentive evolutionary vision, science, and the application of emerging technologies. And whereas the brewing and beverage making industry makes a remarkable lasting impact on the regional economy, each year accounting for nearly 2,000 direct employment jobs and providing almost $100 million in labor payrolls. And whereas these impacts extend widely, supporting myriad, a myriad of ancillary industries and providing benefits to Buncombe, Haywood, Henderson, and Madison Counties, which together comprise the Asheville metropolitan statistical area. And whereas beyond the measurable and significant economic impacts that it produces, the brewing and beverage making industry adds immeasurably to our community's widely recognized charm and character. So true. Now, therefore, I, Esther E. Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim May 15 through 29, 2025, as Asheville Beer Week in the city of Asheville, and welcome all residents to celebrate this time and recognize this industry's contribution to our vibrant and creative culture.
I just want to thank everyone very much for supporting a woman of color and in this position of power and being in the brewing industry. It's been very rewarding, and I appreciate your support.
Hi, I'm Aaron Wilson. I'm the president of the Asher Brewers Alliance and the master brewer for French Bar River Brewing.
Hello, I'm Julian. I started Outsider Brewing, and I'm on the Beer Week Planning Committee.
Good evening. I'm Vicky Cattolano. I'm with the Asheville Media Group, and I serve, I'm very proud to serve as a volunteer on the Asheville Beer Week Planning Committee.
I'm Dave Byer, co-owner of Diatribe Brewing, along with my partner Betty. I'm the brewer, and I'm on the ABA Committee.
Thank you. And now Councilwoman Roney will present Strive Not to Drive Week. So, anyone with Strive Not to Drive, please come forward.
Okay. Whereas the city of Asheville, North Carolina's Close the Gap Plan envisions a place where vibrant, safe, and comfortable streets and greenways give everyone the opportunity to walk to their destinations and enjoy the convenience and health benefits of walking. And whereas transportation is the second-largest household expense in the United States, with car-dependent households spending 50% more on transportation than households with more accessible land use and multimodal transportation options. And whereas 55% of transit riders in the United States earn less than $50,000 a year. Whereas transportation is the largest source of carbon emissions in North Carolina. And whereas traveling by bus contributes 55% less carbon emissions than traveling in a car. And whereas there is a 5:1 economic return on long-term investments in public transportation according to the American Public Transportation Association. And whereas investments in bicycling have led to significant economic growth through job creation, economic activity, and cost savings for individuals according to the League of American Bicyclists. And whereas the city of Asheville has made significant investments to improve multimodal infrastructure across the city. And whereas Strive Not to Drive Week is a collaboration between local governments, nonprofit groups, and advocates in the Asheville metropolitan area that encourages residents and visitors to travel by walking, biking, and bus, where save and practical. Now, therefore, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, has proclaimed May 16 through 24 as Strive Not to Drive Week and encourages the residents of our community and communities throughout Western North Carolina to use multimodal transportation options during Strive Not to Drive Week and throughout the year. I will be one of them. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, I'm Sandy Broadville. I'm the Transportation Demand Management Coordinator for the Land of Sky Regional Council, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for having me here today, and I hope to see you all biking, walking, or riding the bus next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. So, if you're with Public Works, please come on up. Okay, all right, everybody's here. Okay, all right, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Asheville. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public works buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Asheville to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim May 19 through 23, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the city of Asheville, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all.
Good afternoon. My name is Javaris Wilson. I am the Equipment Operator 3 Lead for the Utility Cut Asphalt Crew. I've been with the city for a year and a half.
My name is Dara Sweet, and I work for the sanitation part of Public Works, and I've been working here about three and a half years.
My name is Aurora Martinez. I've been working for the city now going on seven years with the Street Department, operating equipment.
Hi, I'm Justin Shook, the shop supervisor with the Fleet Garage, and I've been here eight years.
Amy Deaton, I'm the interim Public Works Director, and I've been with the city for 10 and a half years. So, thank you for this. It's a great way to just acknowledge the hard work of our Public Works employees, and I appreciate all of y'all's support. And I also want to personally thank all of our employees that are here tonight and all of those that aren't here for the work that they do for the city. A lot of them often go unseen, but their impact is felt every day. So, thanks.
Okay, next, we have National Tennis Month. We're really, we're really kind of all over the place here tonight.
Whereas on May 21, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City, New York, to create rules and standards for the emergent game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is a nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals, at the U.S. Open. And whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world, with over 550,000 members from every corner of the country. And whereas the USTA proudly partners with the Asheville Tennis Association to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone, regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability, through its USTA adaptive grants. And whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than 25.7 million Americans played tennis in 2024, an unprecedented 46% increase in participation over 2019, and the highest number of players since the PAC study began in 2007. And whereas, by increasing the accessibility of tennis for residents of Asheville, North Carolina, of all ages and abilities, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas, USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufactors, and more to promote local program and activities at parks and facilities, showcase tennis, spread the word about the sport and its benefits, and help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now, therefore, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim May 2025 as the National Tennis Month in Asheville, North Carolina, and encourages all residents to become aware of and support National Tennis Month. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ron Freeman, and this is Alan Foyle. We're members of the Board of the Asheville Tennis Association, and we really appreciate the city's support of tennis, whether it's facilities like Ashton Park, whether it's the Parks and Rec Department having adaptive programs that my son participates in, great program, and also for help back in February for the Star Serving Up Love Benefit that brought world-class tennis players to Asheville and raised $1 million for flood relief. So, thank you very much for your support of tennis.
Thank you. Just when you thought we were done because of surprise proclamation tonight. Because we're celebrating Professional Municipal Clerks Week, Maggie. Maggie never lets me do this, so I had to sneak and do it. Are you leaving? Oh, you're getting your other corpse. This is my partner in crime. Okay, ready? Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between residents, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim May 4 through 10, 2025, Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in the city of Asheville, and urge residents to extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Maggie Burlison. Able-bodied Assistant Alex Smith. For the vital services she performs and her exemplary dedication to the city of Asheville, congratulations, Maggie. Do you want to say a few words? Maggie, how long have you been clerk in Asheville?
Just since 95.
Maggie was clerk when I was an intern with the city. That's a long time ago. Okay, well, that was fun. All right, council, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I have a note here that we need to delete, Consent Agenda and Item Y. Not, not remove it, just actually take it off there. It is, if you want to take a look at that. Anyway, that one, we do not want on the consent agenda for this evening. Other than that, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda without Item Y?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, can we look at Item G? I know I sent a message to staff today because I was getting some questions about the inter-local agreement for rental assistance, and the question I asked was specifically around, how much is the admin cost? And the reason I'm asking about this is the county is such an important partner for the city in rental assistance, but it, it does seem to me a curiosity when we have grassroots organizations that are doing rental assistance and especially eviction protection, where you have to move so quickly to prevent evictions from happening in the courts. If we can reduce the admin cost, then we can get more rental assistance done.
It's a great question. So, we, in our agreement with the county, have allowed for them to use up to 10% of the funds for administrative costs, so that's to help bring on additional staff capacity to process applications and move payments to landlords for eviction prevention. With this additional funding, we're actually using administrative dollars that we set aside for city staff capacity. We wound up not needing all of that, thanks to some free technical assistance that we received from HUD. So, we've proposed to remove about half of the $250,000 we set aside for our own administrative needs and move that for rental assistance. So, to answer your question more directly, it's 10% is what we're allowing for the county to use for rental assistance, administrative costs.
Thank you. I think that helps to, for the community to have a bigger picture of what it looks like to do rental assistance, because obviously, you have to have professionals that are helping to move the process along. Grace Covenant had to recently pause their rental assistance funding through the end of May because they're out of funds, and we're a key funder. So, I'm going to support this tonight because we need to support these families, and I understand it's meant to support 27 families. But I also am very aware that the eviction protection part, where we're disrupting evictions as soon as they are happening at the court level, is also a serious concern, and we need more funding. So, thank you for that information.
James, you, maybe you should just auto-mention who you are real quick. You didn't introduce yourself, and then also tell us about the future CDBGDR funds and whether or not those could be made available for rental assistance.
It's a great question. I'm James Shelton. I'm the Community Development Division Manager for the city of Asheville. In terms of rental assistance using CDBGDR funds, again, as a reminder, the CDBGDR funds are our disaster recovery $225 million grant for which we have submitted our action plan to HUD. We are still awaiting approval of that. We are expecting an approval imminently, so we're working with them right now to finalize that agreement. In our action plan that City Council approved on April 8, and we submitted to HUD on April 9, there was not specifically a program that was in our action plan for rental assistance. However, we do have program dollars set aside for housing assistance services within that, housing services. So, that, those are services that are for housing counseling, rapid rehousing, activities that are going to reduce impediments for folks to access housing. So, we do have that included in there, but no, we do not have a housing rental assistance program in our DR program. The intent there is to really strategize it with our DR program to be for capital investments and then looking at other resources, like potentially our Home Investment Partnership dollars, to maybe fill that gap of rental assistance in the long term. But DR does not have a specific rental assistance program in there.
So, we'll be needing to look at other federal sources like Home for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
The Home Consortium is starting to regroup in meetings soon, May 21.
Week from tomorrow.
Week from tomorrow, so we'll be discussing this and looking at a regional kind of footprint. Some of the things we've encountered in the past is that rents are so high here that if we partner with neighboring regions and towns and cities, we can often make more bang for the buck, and so we're going to be discussing that again and talking with four and five county area. We'll bring you back some feedback, and we'll need your input, too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and double-checking. We don't have anyone signed up to speak under this item. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you thought we had Proclamation Extravaganza. Now, we have Presentations and Reports Extravaganza, so I'm going to turn it over to the manager for the manager's report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor and council. Hopefully, this will not be an extravaganza. We'll get through it pretty quickly, I hope. One of my favorite One of my favorite things to do during these meetings is to celebrate the dedication and excellence of City of Asheville's staff and programs that exemplify public service at its best. And Maggie? It takes a second for the slide to move. You think it... Okay, applause on the technical difficulty. Tonight, thank you, we will have recognitions of the following. Jess Foster, who was honored recently as Professional Manager of the Year in Solid Waste for her leadership and solid waste and recovery efforts following the tropical storm Helene. We will have Kim Marmon-Sacks is receiving recognition for her overall leadership and management of the ARPA projects and for being an honorary in the 2025 YMI Honors Award. And then, lastly, the Asheville Fire Department achieved re-accreditation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, affirming its excellence in operations planning and service delivery, and Chief Case will come up and provide information about that. And, okay. And so, Jess, would you like to come up? That's fine. So, the American Public Works Association Professional Manager of the Year is our very own Jess Foster, who is our solid waste manager. She has over 25 years in this field. Jess has built nationally-recognized programs and leads the city's sanitation division with innovation, heart, grit since 2017. She is leading the city's debris removal from tropical storm Helene. From co-launching the city's first composting program to implementing bear-resistant trash carts, y'all know y'all like those trash carts. That's the lady. Jess has expanded waste reduction efforts and tackled challenges with creativity and foresight. Her leadership has improved operations, supported staff, and guided long-term planning, earning both state and national recognition for excellence in solid waste management. We are so, so very proud of you, Jess. Thank you so much for all you do.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city and be a leader as a trash lady.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have who was honored by the YMI Cultural Center, Kim Marmon-Sacks. As our American Rescue Plan Act Project Manager, Kim has demonstrated unwavering commitment to a new approach based on partnership and trust with the 32 project sub-receipients, building capacity, process performance management, and communication within our community. She was recently recognized by the YMI Cultural Center for her pivotal role in the successful renovation and reopening of the historic center. Kim was also instrumental in leveraging ARPA funds to support the hiring of key YMI leadership staff, positioning the organization for future success. I'd like to read this quote from the YMI executive team, which reads, "The YMI would not be opening this week without Kim's leadership and the city's commitment. Her collaborative approach is one I've rarely seen in 25-plus years of community work." That is a profound statement. Thank you so much, Kim, for all of it. She doesn't want to say anything.
Nobody wants to.
All right, so next, Chief Case. We will talk about the Asheville Fire Department accreditation.
I'd really like to talk about that. So, I'm very proud of the Asheville Fire Department. Last April, on April 3rd, we went down to Orlando and sat in front of the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, and we received a re-accreditation for all the work and all the effort that our crews have done. This is our fifth time that we've been accredited as an agency, and it's a pretty significant event because there are over 30,000 fire departments within the United States, and even more when we talk about their international development for that organization. But of that, only 324 fire departments are accredited within the United States, and we happen to be one of them. And even further, only 126 fire departments hold both a Class 1 Insurance Service Office rating and are accredited. That Insurance Service Office rating is pretty important as well because it talks about, it makes us hit different goals within the organization. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. We are evaluated every five years, so the beauty of that is that we can't just rest on our heels, if you will. We have to continue to improve ourselves. This evaluation criteria is, they look at our strategic plan, not only our current one, the one that we're writing, but also how we performed against the one we wrote in the past. Looks at our community risk assessment. Are we looking at our community and determining what our needs of our community are? And are we providing the proper standards to cover? In other words, do we have the right amount of firefighters responding to the right types of incidents within the community? And then, we have self-assessments and site visits. We can't just say we're good, trust us. They actually come out here and they make us tell them why we're doing what we're doing. Why do we want to be accredited? It forces us to be accountable to ourselves and forces us to do quality improvement. It makes us look at our strategic plan. They open it up, and they look back, and they say, "How have you improved yourselves since we were here last?" It also makes us talk to our community. We actually go out to our community and say, "What do you want in a fire department? What's important to you? What are the things that you want to see change?" And we identify those areas. We look at them as our strengths and our weaknesses, and we move forward with that. But we do it through data. We look at the data that we have, and we decide, you know, we can tell how long it takes a fire truck to get to different parts of the city, and we can make plans to improve that. And it also, because of all the different things that we have to put into place with the accreditation process, that then helps tie it back to our insurance ratings, and by becoming a better fire department, we lower insurance ratings for commercial and residential buildings and homeowners and business owners within our community. So, with all that said, it was a lot to say. I'm very proud of our organization. We are truly one of very few in the world, for that matter, that are able to get to this level. So, thank you.
She's got thank you hats, welcome from the Association. Anything? Great. All righty. Well, thanks for being here. And so, in conclusion, thank you, Jess. Thank you, Kim, and definitely thank you, AFD, and all city staff. Appreciate you. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a presentation regarding the state of the airport, and the director of the airport is here, Lou Blaiwais, to make the presentation. Lou, we got your reports. These are actually kind of riveting this year. I mean, not that they aren't always, but...
It's even got a crossword puzzle on it, as newspapers should. Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor, rest of the city council. I appreciate your time and allowing me to speak to give you the address of what's going on the airport for the year of 2024. Air service-wise, we had six airlines serving Asheville: Allegiant, American, Delta, JetBlue, Sun Country, and United. We had 27 non-stop destinations from our local community, although at the end of 2024, we lost Baltimore-Washington Airport, not because of the service or the carrier, it's because BWI did not want to have the low-cost carrier that we had serving us there. From a passenger perspective, for 2024, we had 2,174,125 passengers. That was down 3.2%, majority of it because of Helene in the fall. Seats in the market were up 2.7% for a total of 1,410,577 seats, and our load factor was 77.57% on those airplanes, which was down 5.4%. From an operations perspective, we had 2,099 commercial airline operations. That was down 9.9%, and general aviation and military was down 2,348 flights, down 27.3%. In spite of all the military aircraft that we had during Helene, our general aviation operations were still down. From a construction standpoint, we opened up our south shuttle lot at a cost of approximately $10 million. We also continued, obviously, our work on the terminal building and on the FAA control tower that we're constructing. I will tell you that we will be opening half of the new terminal building between the middle of June and the middle of July of this year. Stay tuned, so we're excited about that new opening. From a community perspective, we still continued our runway 5K, and we generated just under $24,000. We donated those proceeds to AB Tech Aviation Foundation, WNC Pilots Association Foundation, and our partnership with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Western North Carolina. We also did an Asheville Airport Fire Truck Entreat this year because of Helene and everything going on in the month of October. We partnered up with M&amp;M Mars. They provided us candy. We had our trucks out for the general public, come in, get some candy, see our fire trucks and our apparatus. So, that was a huge event for us. We continued to participate with our AVL Giving Program, and we donated just over $8,000 to various nonprofit. The employees of the authority contributed to various nonprofit organizations, including Big Brothers Big Sisters. We also had Asheville Blood Drive a couple times. We did our Blue Ridge Honor air flight commemorating all of the veterans of prior wars going to Washington, DC, and we continued with our music in the airport program. From an economic impact, which the North Carolina State Division of Aviation puts out an economic impact every two years, latest one came out in January of 2025, the Asheville Airport generated $3.85 billion worth of economic impact to Western North Carolina. So, we are a huge factor for that. From financial operations, our operating revenues for the year were $28,891,000. Our operating expenses was $14.8 million, netting us roughly $14 million to the good, and it goes back into, of course, our capital projects at the airport. Our assets at the end of 2024, we had $314,327,000 worth of assets, and that was an increase of roughly $40 million over the prior year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have for me this evening.
Thank you for being here. I think one of the things for me that comes up is being able to access the airport. I hear from a lot of folks, "How come the airport bus service only is every 90 minutes?" And once again, it's because it's the S3 service. So, if you're trying to get to or from the airport, you can get there on the S3 transit line, and we do know that we need more frequency on that route.
We do, thank you.
Yep, a city compliment to the airport services.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Well, thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, we are to Item C under our Presentations and Reports. The long-awaited fiscal year 2025-2026 Annual Operating Budget. Again, Deborah Campbell.
All righty. Good evening again, Mayor, council, staff, and Asheville community. As usual, I'll begin with some opening remarks and comments about the proposed budget, and then I'll turn it over to Tony McDowell and Lindsay Spangler to provide more detailed information. So, it is my pleasure to respectfully submit to you the city manager and staff's proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. As I have consistently done in the past, I want to begin my budget message by saying how grateful I am to be a part of an organization that cares so much for the people it serves. This caring has never been more evident than it was over the last several months since tropical storm Helene devastated our city and region on September 27, 2024. The flooding and wind from Helene caused unprecedented damage to businesses, homes, infrastructure, and public services, and sadly, some in our community lost their lives during the storm. Yet, in the face of tremendous adversity, the people of Asheville are coming together to rebuild, recover, and reimagine our future. And in this spirit of rebuilding, this proposed budget was prepared in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 159-11, and represents many months of work by staff throughout the organization and by council and the community. The fiscal year 2025-26 proposed budget totals $256.08 million, which represents a $5.2 million R, 2.1% increase over the FY 2024-2025 adopted budget. The proposed budget is balanced and also includes a recommendation to increase the city's property tax rate by 3.26 cents to fund employee compensation adjustments and maintain the city's general fund, unassigned fund balance at our policy goal of 15% of expenditures. The proposed budget also focuses on maintaining the city's core services to the community, minimizing as much as possible cost increases, i.e., fee increases, to residents and businesses as they recover in the aftermath of Helene, utilizing one-time revenue sources such as community development block grant disaster recovery grant funds and federal emergency management agency dollars to fund the community's recovery priorities, and developing a fiscally responsible budget that maintains the city's financial metrics and strong credit ratings, and, lastly, building the systems needed for a stronger, more resilient Asheville. This proposed budget, however, would not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of staff in the City of Asheville's Finance and Management Department. I want to recognize, and he's come to the mic, Finance Director Tony McDowell and the staff in the Budget Division, including Lindsay Spangler, Heather Curry, Abigail Riley, Liz Green, and Natalie Bailey. I'll now turn it over to Tony McDowell and then to Lindsay Spangler to provide a more detailed presentation of the budget. Tony?
Thanks, Ms. Campbell, and good evening, Mayor and council. Tony McDowell, Finance Director. I'm going to run through some slides for you all tonight to kind of summarize and provide some additional detail as well to some of the things that Ms. Campbell just mentioned in her introduction. So, our key takeaways tonight, as Ms. Campbell mentioned, we've been working on the budget for a while now. Internally, we started the process many months ago. We started budget work sessions with you all back in March. We had three budget work sessions in March and April, and we used all the feedback that we got from you all at those work sessions to finalize the proposed budget that's being presented to you all tonight. The key thing to note, I would say, in this year's budget is the proposed budget does include funding for a 3% hybrid compensation option, compression adjustments in the Police Department, and putting in place the supervisory structure to begin the Asheville, to begin the move toward a fourth shift in the Asheville Fire Department, and I'll have a little more detail on that later as well. Ms. Campbell mentioned some of the one-time revenues that we're utilizing this year to balance the budget. The one we wanted to highlight here in the key takeaways is a $5 million loan that we just recently got notification that we had gotten from FEMA. It's something called the Community Disaster Loan. It allows us to include that revenue in next year's budget and utilize it to fund essential municipal services in fiscal year 25-26. With the inclusion of that revenue from the loan, staff was able to balance the budget, and Ms. Campbell mentioned this, including those compensation adjustments, maintaining our 15% fund balance through recommending a property tax rate increase of 3.26 cents for next year. And then, finally, and Lindsay's going to go over this with you all, the budget also includes a detailed five-year plan for our capital improvement program that includes both what we call the regular CIP, as well as the 80 million NGO bonds that were approved last November by voters. So, kind of an outline of what we're going to cover... So kind of an outline of what we're going to cover tonight, uh, I'm going to cover, uh, just briefly kind of the budget process, uh, then I'm going to run through some of the, uh, general fund budget highlights, including those proposed compensation adjustments, talk a little bit more about the budget balancing strategies we use this year, and then finally, uh, finish off with, um, a discussion around the property tax rate implications. Uh, Lindsay's then going to come, come up and cover, uh, highlights in our enterprise funds, uh, as well as, uh, cover just briefly the Business Improvement District budget that you all be, will be voting on, uh, in June with the ordinance, and then finally cover the Capital Improvement Program. So just to quickly go through the process and priorities, and I know Council's seen these slides, um, a number of times through the process, but, uh, just in case we have folks out in the community who are just tuning in tonight, uh, the budget development process is a, is a many-month process. Uh, we started, uh, well back, uh, before the beginning of this calendar year, working on this year's budget, and this year's budget's been very unique. Um, obviously, coming out of the storm, uh, in late September, we had to, uh, regroup financially, uh, and we have done a lot of work since then, working with Council to get us to the point where we're at tonight to propose, uh, the proposed, for the proposed budget that we have for you all tonight. So this is a, this slide kind of shows, uh, what the process looks like, uh, in a typical year. Uh, you'll notice in that decision-making block there in the middle, uh, typically, we talk to you all about new and expanded services. Uh, obviously, with this year's budget, we're in a very different place, and so we're not including, uh, any funding this year for any new or expanded services or new positions. Um, and so, uh, we're at the point now where we're bringing the proposed budget to you all. You all have about a month to deliberate on the budget, uh, and then we'll be back in early June to schedule adoption with you all, and then, uh, the new fiscal year starts in July. And this particular, uh, slide here kind of provides the detail of that. Uh, you can see again all those work sessions that I mentioned back from, uh, March and April, uh, and we also, we really began the process of talking to you all at the, the Council Retreat back in February, um, and then we'll have the proposed budget presentation tonight. The public hearing on the budget will, will occur in two weeks, and then we'll be back for budget adoption on June tenth. We also, uh, as we always do when we go through the budget process, we want to highlight, uh, our guiding principles here, and this is something that when Ms. Campbell got here, she encouraged us to think long and hard about the budget process and what are the goals and outcomes that we want to achieve through the process. And so we, um, developed these three key guiding principles that we've been utilizing for the entire time Ms. Campbell's been our city manager, and so I'll just quickly run through these. And so the first is essential service delivery. So we want to think about that as we make decisions around the budget, and we want to make sure that each department have the re, has the resources necessary to meet the service delivery expectations of this community. Secondly, we want to enhance customer value, and so that means more than just making sure departments have the necessary resources. It also means ensuring that they're delivering services in an efficient way that improves the customer experience. And then finally, we want to align our resources in a strategic way with you all's priorities, the community's priorities, and staff goals. And so those have been our guiding principles for the last six budgets, I think, that Ms. Campbell has been here. This year, given the impacts of Helene, we wanted to go and, and dig a little bit deeper with that and talk about some other key themes, themes that we wanted to focus on this year with the budget as well. First is, we wanted to make sure, you know, coming out of Helene, given the financial constraints that we were facing, we wanted to make sure that we developed a budget that continued to provide funding to maintain the city's core services. We also wanted to make sure we developed a proposed budget that minimized cost increases to residents and businesses as they recovered from Hurricane Helene. We, uh, one of the ways we hoped to accomplish that was to look to one-time revenue sources, and I'm going to cover a couple of those later in the presentation, uh, in particular the CD BGDR money and the funding from FEMA to fund, uh, the community's recovery priorities that we're not able to fund within the existing operating budget. And then finally, we wanted to make sure we developed, developed a proposed budget that was fiscally responsible in order to maintain the city's financial metrics and strong credit ratings. When you all had your, uh, retreat back in Fe- February, you identified four, uh, priorities for Helene recovery for this year: people, housing, infrastructure and environment, and the economy. Um, if you all read the, uh, city manager's budget message that's included with the budget tonight, you'll see some additional detail that we provided, uh, to provide some additional context to those areas, but those are the main priorities that you all identified coming out of, out of Helene, and we kept those in mind as we went through the budget process this year as well. We also did a, our, our community and, uh, our Cape Department, uh, did a survey of the community, uh, and those results, uh, we had over six, sixty-nine hundred community members that participated in that survey, and they provided input on what matters most to them as Asheville continues to recover and rebuild in the aftermath of Helene. And I won't read through all of these, but again, these were things that we tried to focus on and keep in mind as we went through developing the proposed budget for you all this year. So just quickly, I want to go through some budget highlights. Uh, Ms. Campbell mentioned that our overall, uh, total budget, our net budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six is two hundred and fifty-six million. That represents a five point two million dollar increase over the current year budget, which is about a two point one percent increase. Uh, I'll highlight on this slide the, the general fund, which is the city's largest operating fund, and the one I'm going to focus most on with my, um, uh, presentation tonight. Uh, that fund, uh, has a two point nine million dollar or one point six percent increase overall. The other, uh, information, uh, listed on this page, those are our enterprise funds, and, uh, Lindsay Spangler, our budget manager, is going to go through those for you all. And there were some, some ups and downs in those, and she'll cover those when she goes through her part of the presentation. So, uh, how do we fund our municipal services? So this chart shows, uh, revenues across all funds. This includes both the general fund and the enterprise funds. You can see the largest part of our revenue base is the property tax, it's about thirty-three percent overall of our overall revenue. Uh, in the general fund, that number's, uh, closer to fifty percent. Uh, we then get about a third of our revenue, thirty-one percent from charges and licenses and permits. Uh, the biggest component of that is the, uh, water system charges, the water customer charges, and then finally, uh, the sales taxes, which provide about fifteen percent of our overall revenue. This year, uh, in the general fund in particular, uh, Helene has had some pretty significant impacts on our two main general fund revenue sources, property taxes and sales taxes. Uh, for property taxes, in a normal year, we will see our property tax base grow somewhere between one and a half and two percent. Uh, this year, based on the latest estimates we've gotten from the County Tax Office, we're actually going to see a decline next year of about one percent, um, which will mean a, a decline in revenue of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from property taxes in next year. For sales taxes, um, there's a lot of uncertainty around, uh, sales taxes and how they're going to recover and bounce back from Helene. Uh, to, to be conservative, we have budgeted our sales tax revenues to be down, uh, about five percent next year compared to what we budgeted this year. That's about a two million dollar decrease compared to our revenue budget in the current year. Um, we did have another, a number of other revenues in the general fund that were kind of up and down, but overall, the rest of our general fund revenues are projected to be flat compared to next year. And in a typical year, we would see, uh, increases in some of those revenues as well. So it's been a very fiscally, or financially constrained budget that we've been developing. On the expenditure side of the budget, and again, this includes all funds, uh, if you look at those two, uh, pie chart sections on the right, uh, salary and wages and benefits, those make up almost sixty percent of our overall budget. Uh, then the other main components are operating costs such as materials, supplies, contracted services, and then finally, our capital and debt program makes up about fifteen percent of our overall budget. As I mentioned, compensation's the largest part of our budget, so I wanted to cover those proposed compensation adjustments that we mentioned earlier. Uh, the first of which is, uh, what we're calling the three percent hybrid option, uh, and so that is a three percent increase for all staff whose salaries are above the median pay of fifty-eight thousand, and a one thousand seven hundred and forty flat rate increase for those below the be, below the median. Uh, and this is for all employees who are not on a public safety pay plan. Um, the, the benefit of this type of hybrid approach is it does allow us to, uh, raise the salary of our lowest employees, those below the median pay, at a slightly higher rate above that three percent increase, uh, that, that folks above the thirty-eight, above the fifty-eight thousand dollars will receive next year. For the police pay plan, uh, they're going to be transitioning to a new pay structure next year, a career ladder approach, uh, and this includes, uh, and just adjustments that, uh, will help them avoid compression as they make this transition to the new pay plan. Uh, officers not receiving these compression adjustments, and there's only a handful of those, uh, will receive a one-time, uh, amount equivalent to three percent of their salary. The total cost of those adjustments is about one point one million dollars for next year. And then finally, we just wanted to highlight in the fire pay plan, uh, all the employees in, on the fire pay, fire pay plan will get a three percent increase, uh, next year. In addition, in the fire department, as I mentioned earlier, we're putting in place, uh, funding two hundred and five thousand dollars that will allow the fire department to begin, uh, promotions, uh, so they can put the supervisory and str, supervisory structure in place for fourth shift. Uh, and the goal here is, by adding a fourth shift, firefighters will be able to reduce the number of hours that they work on, on average, from a fifty-six hour week down to fi, down to forty-two hours. Um, the proposed budget does not recommend adding any additional new firefighters next year, but it does recommend putting in place the supervisory structure, and then future councils and staff will determine the pace of implementation based on available resources as we move forward. I do want to highlight some of the general fund cost increases, and we've talked to you all a lot about this as we've gone through the, the budget process. Um, we, we did, like I said, we, we've suffered some, uh, losses in revenue, but we've also had to deal with some unavoidable cost increases in, as well, and so due to those financial constraints, uh, we, we instructed, the Finance Department instructed departments to, uh, not request any additional funding for new, uh, programs or positions in the current year budget, and as I mentioned earlier, there are no new city-funded positions, uh, included in the proposed budget this year. Um, I did, again, mention those unavoidable cost increases, uh, associated with continuing existing services. Those major increases are in healthcare and state retirement. Again, we've talked to you all a lot about that as we've gone through the process. Uh, just quickly on this chart, uh, this, uh, shows all the, uh, cost increases in the general fund next year. Uh, the compression, or the compensation adjustments that we are recommending, uh, is a cost of about three point two million dollars. Uh, the other two major drivers of costs in the general fund next year are the healthcare cost increases and the, uh, required, uh, cost increases, uh, for the state retirement system, and we've highlighted a few other, uh, cost increases as well. And so in total, those come out to about seven point seven million in new costs in the general fund next year. So be able, so in order to be able to absorb those additional costs, uh, we've had to make some reductions in the general fund budget. Uh, we made about five million dollars in budget reductions to close the gap between revenues and expenses, and I'll show you those on the next slide. We also utilized, uh, several one-time revenue sources to help balance the budget. Uh, we utilized some available fund balance in our street cut fund, uh, to provide some one-time revenue to the general fund. We also utilized, utilized fund balance in the transit fund to balance that budget so that we didn't have to increase, uh, our general fund support for transit next year. And then finally, the, uh, five million dollar loan that we received through the FEMA Community Disaster Loan Program, as I mentioned earlier, uh, that is one of the one-time revenue sources that we used in budget balancing strategies for next year as well. So we just wanted to highlight, uh, those, uh, cost reductions, the budget balancing strategies that we utilized, uh, the biggest of which was, um, uh, not, or pausing our contribution to the other post-employment benefit trust fund contribution. Uh, that's something, uh, that, that funds, uh, future retiree healthcare costs. Uh, we've been putting money into that program for a number of years. We worked with our actuariales, they, they took a look at where we're at with that fund, uh, and they recommended that we could move ahead with pausing that contribution next year. We will need, in future years, to look, we will have to begin making that contribution again and building it back up to that level that we were at, uh, prior to the storm. We also utilized some additional personnel savings this year. We're going to be looking to, uh, CDB GDR and FEMA money to help us fu, fund some of our personnel costs, uh, for next year. Uh, just a couple of other things I'd highlight on this slide, uh, we paused the housing trust fund contribution next year, uh, which is a saving, it's a savings of about five hundred thousand. Uh, we also paused the strategic partnership grant funding next year, uh, which is a savings of about three hundred thousand. So in total, we were able to achieve about five million dollars in savings to help offset some of those cost increases that I mentioned earlier. So to kind of bring it all together, um, after, uh, we included the compensation adjustments and made those, um, budget reductions I just mentioned on the previous slide, uh, there was still a gap in the general fund, and to make up that gap, uh, we're recommending a property tax rate increase of three point two six cents for next year. Uh, that would, again, allow us to maintain our fifteen percent fund balance, uh, fund the compensation adjustments that I mentioned on the previous slide, uh, and balance the budget. For the average homeowner in Asheville, uh, who has a, uh, residential tax value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would represent, uh, an annual increase of about a hundred and fourteen dollars next year for their tax bill, uh, or about nine dollars and fifty cents per month. And finally, I think this is my last slide before I turn it over to Lindsay. I just, I did just want to mention, uh, and conclude by, uh, talking a little bit about the, the impact of those one-time budget balancing strategies that we mentioned. They are one-time, and so a lot of those reductions that I showed you all on slide twenty-one, along with the, uh, funding from the CDL revenue and the street cut and transit fund fund balances, uh, we, we likely will not be able to continue to utilize those sources of, um, of revenue and, and expense cutting in future budgets. So what that means is, is that, um, uh, we're going to, based, when we start the budget process next year, we're going to have to have conversations about a potential tax rate increase next year as well. Uh, revaluation is scheduled to occur next year, that could help with the process, uh, but there will likely be, uh, a need to talk about, uh, a tax ra, tax rate increase with you all again next year, uh, particularly when we start looking at the funding for the Geo Bond Debt Service, uh, that we were scheduled to, um, fund this year with the tax rate increase that we delayed by one year, and then restoring some of those budget reductions that we have made this year, uh, as well as contemplating, uh, new firefighters for the fourth shift as well, and any other new programs that may be, may be considered. So with that, I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay to do the second half of our presentation.
All right, moving right along. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the enterprise funds. So we have about two point four million dollars in, uh, additional water revenue next year, and that's due to the fee increases that you folks approved at your previous council meeting, and that'll help fund some capital and operating costs there. Then, um, in the transit fund, we're utilizing about nine hundred thousand dollars in their available fund balance, and that's mostly due to an increase in their operating contract, um, and it's also going to help us keep the, um, funding from the general fund and parking fund, uh, flat. For the parking fund, um, we're adjusting their capital funding by about one million dollars downwards, and that's due to the revenue estimates that we're seeing right now. If we get to a place mid-year where we need to reconsider that and increase our capital, we can take a look at that then. Uh, for the street cut fund, we're u, using about one million dollars in, uh, a one-time fund balance appropriation, so six hundred of that is going to the general fund to close the gap there and to fund a little bit more, um, street maintenance, and then four hundred thousand is going to the capital fund to fund some paving. Uh, for Harrah's, uh, we have no updates, um, continuing of operations there, and then for Stormwater, we, we're utilizing about four hundred thousand of their fund balance for capital work and to balance their budget. And lastly, as Tony mentioned, we just wanted to bring the, uh, a little bit of information about the bid. So the bid, you won't find information on that in the budget, the proposed budget that was released on Friday, but this will be part of the budget ordinance that you adopt in June. So, um, we're not recommending a tax rate increase for those within the bid. Uh, their current tax rate is, uh, point oh eight seven seven cents per hundred dollars, uh, and their budget will remain the same next year, and that's about one point two five million dollars. Skip something. All right, I'm going to speak about the Capital Improvement Program. So, we had originally planned to come to you today with a ten-year capital improvement program, but, uh, we had a hurricane, and so right now, we're presenting you with a five-year capital plan. Um, however, of course, there are many other things happening outside of that normal CIP that we'll speak about tonight. So where does the funding come from for all these projects? So we have general fund dollars, and that's kind of the most flexible source of funding. Um, there's many projects within that bucket, including transportation, parks, facilities, and vehicles, and IT, et cetera. Then, of course, we have our bond funding. The voters approved eighty million dollars in bonds in November, and so, um, spending that money is limited to the categories that the voters approved. So that's affordable housing, parks, public safety facilities, and transportation. There's also a lot of funding coming in through the FEMA Public Assistance Program, and of course, that funding is limited to, to reconstruction of assets that were damaged in Tropical Storm Helene, and there's a little bit of mitigation assistance and resiliency work that can be done as well. It's kind of limited, but for everything else, um, there are a lot of other funding sources that we're looking towards, including the CDB GDR funding, uh, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and some other... other grants that are available to us that we're trying to utilize as much as possible to get the work done. So here's what the general fund CIP looks like. You'll see, this does not include the bond funding or the FEMA-funded recovery projects. We'll go into those in some later slides, but just kind of wanted to give you a sense of the big picture in terms of our regular CIP program, facility maintenance, fleet and equipment, greenways, recreation, entertainment, and streets and sidewalks. Again, we have $80 million in general obligation bonds that we're going to start to spend, already starting, it's very exciting. And there were, there was $20 million approved in each of the four categories that I mentioned previously. So here I have kind of a list of the projects that are anticipated to be covered under these bonds. This list is kind of changing. You know, it's dependent on estimates for construction that could change over time, but this is kind of basically what we're looking at right now in terms of what we're prioritizing at the moment. And here you have the transportation and the parks and rec projects. And again, you can find this chart in the budget document. And here's the public safety facility program projects as well. I didn't list the affordable housing bond projects here, but those are also underway. And there's a lot of funding that we can use for multifamily construction, land acquisition, home repair, et cetera. So here's kind of a big picture look at our recovery capital program. So you have here the complex projects at the top, and then the simple projects at the bottom, and that's kind of a FEMA distinction. But of course, we have a lot of very complex projects happening, French Broad Riverfront, Swananoa, the golf course, and of course, our water treatment facilities. And then down below in the simple project section, you can see kind of all the more one-off projects, parks, facilities, greenways, et cetera. And then that bottom line there is just everything else. So I think main thing I want to share about this slide is that there's just a lot going on, and there's going to be a lot of touch points and a lot of work that has, is going into this on the capital side. Just a few quick highlights from the enterprise funds for their capital projects. There's about $240 million in water resources capital going to identified maintenance needs of the system. There's also about $10 million in parking services projects that are to address the maintenance issues that were found during the parking, parking facility assessment that was finished last year. And there is also, of course, ongoing maintenance and improvements to the city's stormwater infrastructure. All right. That's it for me. I think we wanted to just remind everyone of next steps. So we are here today presenting the proposed budget. We look forward to working with you over the next month or so with any questions while we work towards the adopted budget in June. And of course, we'll have that public hearing at our next city council meeting on the 27th. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and thanks to all the hard work on behalf of staff and the management on getting this year's budget put together. It's been a lot of work and working with, with us and a lot of meetings with us as well. So as was mentioned, the public hearing on the budget is at the next council meeting. We'll officially have a public hearing. There may be some discussion here tonight about the budget amongst council members, but the official public hearing will be at the next council meeting. Council members, before we leave this subject and move on to our, one item on our public hearings agenda, do you have questions or comments at this point?
I do have a statement for our friends and neighbors in the room, but also for folks listening at home, because our budgets are moral documents. They are agreements that we make with our tax dollars around how to fund our public services and support our plans and policies. I'm wrestling with deep concern in the community about property tax increases while we're recovering from Helene. I acknowledge that property tax increases impact businesses and homeowners while disproportionately impacting residential and commercial renters. And due to the county's tax structure, weigh heaviest on Asheville's historic blackened legacy neighborhoods. I'm disappointed that our state hasn't yet allocated recovery funding set aside for Western North Carolina, funding that still could include revenue replacement for cities including Asheville that were impacted by Helene. And in the absence of that state action on revenue replacement, local governments including Asheville are stuck with the choice of property tax increases or service cuts. I also share a community concern that we retain our first responders that gained highly recruitable skills in disaster response through Helene. Our fire department that led disaster response include firefighters that gained skills in flooded landslide rescue through the storm, then battled wildfires that followed. Other cities facing climate catastrophe want first responders with these skills. They want our folks, but we need them too. So I'm repeating my request to include four or five positions in the Asheville Fire Department starting in January to take action in a good faith effort to expedite the long-term fourth shift plan in this budget cycle, and request that we review potential cuts instead of additional property tax increases at a budget work session before the public hearing. Now, I understand that that would be speculative, that we would have a budget work session. I don't know if that's something the staff is considering.
We will work on it.
Did you have a, I think, you seemed like you wanted to make another comment before that, but...
No, we, I, I just wanted to thank you all for all of the time that you all devoted. We, as you said, this was a heavy lift for staff, but it was a heavy lift for you all as well, because we had lots of work sessions, we had informal conversations with you all about the budget, and we just wanted to say thank you. In terms of another budget work session, one has not been scheduled, but we will take the feedback and see if it warrants either a work session or another conversation with you all in some kind of format.
I'd be supportive of either of those options.
Likewise, chiming in, I would support that. To be clear, the four or five positions starting in January?
Yeah, it sounds to me like council, in terms of what we're down to, in terms of the final pieces to fall into place, what I'm hearing from this council is a continuing discussion around whether or not to fund a position starting in this next fiscal year to move to the fourth shift. Anything else that is still sort of fluid that you feel like we need to address through a work session or conversation, as Deborah put it?
Well, I'd, I'll add my fourth to adding the five firefighters this fiscal year.
Well, so no voting's happening right now. I think we're just giving some direction to, so hearing that loud and clear, are there any other, just so that we don't get any last minute surprises, are there any other things you want to spend some time on?
Mayor, if I could clarify, I think what I heard also is look at cuts, reductions, but not a taxing increase.
I'm assuming that if, so let me just say this, you know, and I've said this before, we're, we're a little bit challenged. I mean, you have made a recommendation. You are the city manager, and you have made a recommendation to us around personnel. And so, you know, we talk about our lanes all the time, and, and this council is about to override your recommendation, apparently. So maybe, maybe not. So I, I guess what, what this council is directing you to do would be to show the council how to fund this expansion. Some people want cuts, some people might support a property tax increase. I assume that's kind of the two things that would be available. I, I don't know what else would be available, other than those two things.
I don't, I can't speak to those things, but I do have another request. I'm just curious if there's any updated sales tax revenue projections available, if we're still using the number we started with in January, because that could have some impact. I do support, what I was really signaling support for was an additional work session or conversation to talk about these things. I'm not ready to say I want this, but not that, or how. But I think there's some more discussions to be had, at least for me. I'm not quite comfortable yet with both the city and the county facing this level of increase for our residents. And I think, you know, there's just some other additional information I'd like to see shared with residents that not necessarily our budget changes, but like, for example, we're projecting the cost to a resident over a home value of $350,000. I noticed the county's using 400. I wonder, you know, it's some kind of number we get as a median home value, I believe, but I'd be curious if we could give some more numbers and demonstrations, 250,000, 500, whatever those tiers you might feel are best or most appropriate. And then we also, just for follow-up information for the community, I was going to ask Tony this, but I think in general budget discussions, we're starting to get some form emails from residents suggesting that we utilize more of our fund balance and dip below that 15%. This council has voiced their support for staying at the 15%, but it might help us to share some more of the reasons why. And we talk about it a lot, but folks are weighing in right now, and they may not hear that as part of this presentation, so.
Yeah, I noticed in this presentation, you didn't do your fund balance slide, so maybe when we do the...
It just helps, especially with the form emails coming in. And then the last thing is that last year, and I know we can't predict surprises, but last year, right after we adopted a budget, then we learned about some other revenues that may coming back as a clawback from transit funds. And I'd just be curious to know if there's any potential things out there that could be in the near future that we need to know about, that could happen after a budget vote, for example. And there may not be, but I feel obligated to ask.
I guess I'd ask our peers, we're all here now, what do we need a work session for? Like, what, is now the time to have a conversation, or what do we need between now and something that's additional? I'm here for it, what's the conversation?
How to, how to fund.
What, what would be cut?
Staff recommendation.
Yeah, you've given us the, you've given us the tax implications. We have that information, very granular information about if you add five positions full year or mid-year, you've given us the, that was, you had to kind of link, click through a couple of clicks, but, but it was there. You provided that. The, what I, what I guess we don't have is if there, if you do cut rather than raise taxes, what those cuts would be. I mean, you, you all have already presented to us sort of the belt tightening cuts, but...
Perhaps that can be an agenda briefing item. I'm not sure how best, but I'm looking forward to hearing your input on that request, rather than us making the recommendation.
We will do it.
Is there anything, anything else that we want to hear about on the budget? Okay.
Thank you. This concludes our presentation.
Okay, we have one public hearing item, and good thing Tony's still here, because he is going to be presenting it. And it is a public hearing on proposed financing for McCormick Field improvements.
Okay. Good evening again, Mayor and Council, Tony McDowell, Finance Director. And this is going to be a very short presentation tonight before you all kick off your public hearing. So the item tonight is a debt issuance for the construction project, McCormick Field Construction Capital Improvement Project. That project began last fall and is slated for completion in April of 2026. The financial plan for paying for that project includes the issuance of what we call limited obligation bond debt, and that's what we're getting ready to do in, in June with you all's approval. Once that debt is issued, the debt service on those bonds will be funded by the city, Buncombe County, the Tourism Development Authority, and the Asheville Tourist Minor League Baseball Team. That was a partnership that Chris Corle worked to develop a year or so ago, year or so ago. A couple of those agreements that related to this were on tonight's agenda, on the consent agenda, and you all approved those with the Tourism Development Authority and, and the lease with the tourist baseball team. In order to reimburse ourselves for some of those expenses that have occurred since this project began last fall, staff is recommending that we move ahead with issuance of debt in June. It's about a 35-ish million dollar project, closer to 37, I think overall, once you include some of the one-time money that's being put in. And to date, we've spent somewhere between 10 and 15 million dollars. So we want to make sure we issue the debt before June, before our fiscal year ends, so that we can get the cash in to cover those expenses that we've already incurred. So tonight, we're seeking, well, one approval from council. First of all, we're going to hold a public hearing, which is required by state statute. And then we're going to ask you all to approve what's called the initial resolution associated with this debt issuance. And then we'll be back in two weeks for approval of the final resolution. So just a couple of things I want to point out on the calendar, and, and all these are statutory, statutorily required steps associated with the issuance of debt in North Carolina. We were required to issue a public hearing notice for the public hearing that was, that's going to be held tonight. That was issued on May 2nd. The one thing I do want to point out is when that notice was issued, it included language that said, "We currently do not expect the debt issuance to exceed 34 million." After consulting with our bond counsel and financial advisors last week, we have changed that to 35 million in the, in the resolution that you all be asking, acting upon tonight. And the reason we're doing that is to provide some additional flexibility as market conditions change over the next few weeks, and also to make sure that we are allowed to issue a little bit more than 34 million if necessary to cover the, the cost of issuing the debt. So again, here we are tonight on May 13th, on May 13th, where you all are being asked to adopt the initial resolution and hold the public hearing. As I mentioned, we'll be back in two weeks for the, what's called the approving resolution, which is the final official city council action related to this. We then are on the agenda for June 3rd for the Local Government Commission, and hopefully they will also give approval for this debt issuance. And then we will go out and sell the debt on June 11th, and the bonds will close on June 25th. And again, that will allow us to get the cash in before the end of this fiscal year to offset the expenses that we've incurred to date. So with that, that's all I have for my presentation. So unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back over to you all to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, let me just double check. I will open the public hearing and I'll close the public hearing. There is not anyone signed up to speak. Do I have a motion? Look like you're ready.
Yeah, let's see. Yeah, go ahead.
Second bullet, right, yeah. I make a motion to adopt an initial resolution authorizing the city manager or the finance director to pursue and negotiate on behalf of the city debt financing associated with a $35 million 2025 limited obligation bonds or LOBs for McCormick Field improvements.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It's just one motion on this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearings agenda. That brings us to the general public comment portion of our agenda. Folks who are signed up to speak tonight under the general public comment, please know you'll have three minutes to speak. Watch the lights on the lectern, green means go, orange means you're almost done, and red means stop, and it will make a noise. And, and when it stops, please, please conclude your remarks at that moment. And if you feel like whatever the person is saying that is speaking and you're really excited positively about it, you can just kind of give us like a yay, because we don't allow clapping or cheering or snapping or, or whatever. And if you don't, don't like it, obviously, also silently indicate that I suggest a thumbs down. So just, just some guidelines there. All right, so the first person signed up to speak tonight under general public comment is William Warner.
Am I good? Good evening to you. My name is Bill Warner. I live on Cortland Place here in Asheville. I want to comment on the latest version of the I-26 connector that's been proposed by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I think it's a very bad plan, the flyover especially. There are three major environmental problems that it will exacerbate, and there are at least four profound civic losses that I believe will result from this plan. And I'm not going to go into all of those, because I think you already know what they are, and you'll be hearing about them anyway in the future. But I just want to say that it is a far worse proposal than the one we were left with in 2018, and it was something of a surprise to you guys, I think, and everybody else as well. I do want to tell you about the little street I live on, Cortland Place. It's a brief little cul-de-sac off of Cortland Avenue. It's western terminus, but the new plan is going to be swallowed up by the right-of-way that goes with it, that wasn't there before. At least two homes at the end of the street are in danger of being taken through eminent dunes. At least two homes at the end of the street are in danger of being taken through eminent domain right now. Possibly four. It's a kind of complicated situation. But I think that it's not necessary to take these homes. I mentioned that. The homeowners along Cortland Place are largely young people. They're young people starting out in life. They're young families, just getting started. And there are people in the middle of life, too, who are just getting a hold on things, and they're starting to move ahead. This new greater proximity to this right-of-way is going to be even more detrimental to their property values than the old one was, and it's going to hurt them. And they are mostly progressive voters, let me mention to you guys. I bring it up partly because I love my neighborhood and a city of wonderful neighborhoods. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and we're lucky to live there. I think, though, it is typical of neighborhoods that are going to be affected along the way by this new enlarged corridor. So I urge you, please, to influence the Department of Transportation any way you can to amend and come up with a better plan than what they've got. And come by Cortland Place sometime and visit with us. You will not be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Johnson.
Hey there. Thank you. I'd like to talk about public transit infrastructure. It's got to be preserved. It needs to be built out. Thirty years of development in North Carolina and in western North Carolina specifically, we've not had a bus service that goes completely from downtown all the way to Weaverville. And I know that that's another city, and it's got to be like coordinated between them. But one thing that everyone wants is access to cheap labor. And cheap labor doesn't necessarily have a car, so they have to get from place to place. And I think that the public transit system, the bus system, would be better served if everybody could get on and get to wherever they're going. And I challenge anyone here who's using a car today, when that new thing that you just spoke about, strive not to drive, comes up, you could take the bus and see how it works for you. See if you can get from place to place. Just assume that you had to, because some people do in this community, and I want to make sure that they are heard. So I'm here speaking for them. As we get older, we're going to be needing more access to that kind of thing. And right now, you have to get off the bus and get onto something else. If you're already mobility-challenged, you might say, you know what? I don't need to go to the doctor as bad as I thought I did. So I don't want to see anybody in that position. Thank you very much.
David Clark.
Hello there. I'm a botanist. I work at UNC Asheville. I'm a professor. Been there for twenty-five years. And I want to talk about the woods by my house. And I live right next to that, and I'm also a botanist. So you can tell I'm at the age where I don't go looking for trouble, but this thing came looking for me. So I am here asking for your help on this issue. And we have forty-five acres of woods that are threatened with developments. We got off on a bad foot, because first thing I knew of it were track holes in my backyard that the university sent to do exploratory work, knocking down trees and drilling. In my, I have two simple asks from you. In my meeting with you, Mayor, it's clear you guys know more than we do about this. And I'm also part of the Neighborhood Association, so I'd like to know what you know. And also, I was involved in the Big Ivy proclamation, if you remember that, some years back. I'd like something similar for these woods, all right? If you think about what we have, there's such a reaction because there's a lot of rumors swirling. So I'd like to know what you know to dispel some rumors, because I hear everything from affordable housing to tennis complexes to a hotel or something like that. But I would speak for the importance of those, because of their size and their proximity to other high-quality natural areas, that it go in a continuous line from there all the way up over Elk Mountain into the Craggies. And that's why we have a sustainable population of bears and other charismatic wildlife in this city. So if you don't speak for that, it is part of the city. I know you're not part of the university's machinations, but I'm looking for a partnership here. I've been accused of NIMBYism. Let me address this. My house on Dorch, I bought from Brownie Newman. You may remember him. He had a half-acre infill development, four lots, and I bought two. That was in 2004. And the back lot, there's an extra lot. That's my nature reserve. Let's compare that to the university. Three hundred acres, mas o menos, in the sixties. And for the longest time, they kept to the top of the hill, kept their buildings close. Well, they tried to get them close to that in terms of their development activities. They neglected the rest of it. They didn't develop it, but they neglected it. And it needs more than neglect. I'm out every weekend cutting the invasives in my backyard. So if I'm looking for your support on our vision for a land ethic that maintains those high-quality natural areas as a resource for this city, there's no less than a hundred dog walkers every day in that place. We have no parks in our neighborhood. We have a very functional community group that's working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Marcus.
Hi, I'm Sonia Marcus, and I am a homeowner in the east-west Asheville neighborhood who will be very directly impacted by the I-26 connector project. And what I want to do tonight is say thank you to all of you. I wanted to say thank you for amplifying our concerns and helping us to crystallize the issues that we need to focus on and for catalyzing a meaningful response from our colleagues at NC DOT. As a result of our collective work, we have made it clear to our community that our homes, neighborhoods, and neighbors matter enough to do everything we can to give the city the best possible I-26 connector project we can get. By re-envisioning the Patton Avenue intersection, reconsidering the size and length with of our future city thoroughfares, and correcting some of the obvious missed design opportunities, we can maximize city revenue and ensure a safer, more vibrant urban area. I'd like to make a few additional requests. Please respectfully ask city staff to add community members to the rapid response team so we have the institutional memory and community perspectives that we need to address the issues that will continue to arise during project implementation. Please also accelerate the reconvening and new appointments for the aesthetics committee, because we have no time to lose, and the last thing we want is to further delay this project. As long as we get our structures and processes in place swiftly and NC DOT staff and contractors continue to work with us constructively, we can keep the work on track. Lastly, let us not sacrifice important design features in an effort to avoid temporary discomfort or annoyance. The future residents of this city will thank us long after the grumpy tales about construction have faded to a vague and distant memory. We hope to see some of you, if not all of you, at the upcoming Community Design Sherret, which will be taking place this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at Hatch on South French Broad. Thank you for all your service to this critically important project. You are appreciated.
Thank you, Sonia. Sonia, if you could send us some more information about the event, we've heard some about it, but. Yeah, maybe, and maybe when it would be most helpful to have. Electeds attend. Yeah, thanks. Cassandra Wells. Even though she's municipal city clerk of the year.
Hello. My name is Cassandra Wells, and I'm a resident of the Asheville Housing Authority. And I came here today because we have not had an opportunity to speak to the new board members that were appointed to the Asheville Housing Authority after all of the things that happened. And so I just want to make sure that the people care about, the board members care about the residents, because we do matter. And so I'm hoping that they would come and hear our concerns. We would like to also be involved in the process of when you elect the next CEO. I used to be a member on the board. When Mayor Bellamy was here, she appointed me as a resident. And then from a resident, I moved our way up to the board chair. And so I know how the process works. So I would like for us to appoint somebody or whatever that looks like, that we are involved in the process, because a lot of things have happened. A lot of things have been put on the back burner because of the situation that happened at the Housing Authority. And so I'm here for that. I'm here for the people. And that the people on the board cares about the residents and that they come and see about us and make sure that they asking us questions. And so we can tell them what's happening and that things are being taken care of, because they are not. And so I would appreciate it if somebody could, I don't know, have a town hall meeting. I don't know how it will be structured, but I would like for us to be able to have a say in what's happening at the Housing Authority, because we live there. It's falling apart. And with everything else from the top now to the bottom, we need some help. And we need somebody to come and see about what's happening and try to make this thing a little better than it is, because some of us can't go to these places that you have out here. It's too expensive. And so what we have is what we have, and in the city limits, we can walk to some of the places we can go. We can catch the bus. But just like the lady was saying about the bus, sometimes that's a barrier, too, because you have to walk so far. So we want the Housing Authority, we need it up and running properly. We need the proper people in place, but we need people that care, not come with some agenda about whatever it is that they going through. We not a part of that, but we a part of the city. We pay taxes. We pay our rent. We do all the things that we supposed to do. So we would appreciate it if they could come out. We're having a cleanup in Piersview this Saturday from 10:00 to 11:00. Ms. Roni, I know you have came and hung out sometimes, so, but we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Newis. Maybe I'm pronouncing that wrong.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Sandy Newis. I'm a psychologist in Asheville. I own a couple houses. I have co-developed several businesses. I've been here since, for about twenty-five years. My kids go to Asheville City Schools, and I live in the Five Point neighborhood. And I'm here to speak in support of saving the woods and to ask you to stop the development, the unchecked development of the area, which will not benefit the city. So I wanted to spend a minute, I'm quoting from these two particular reports. One is the Collective for Nature, Emergence, Science, and Practice, and another is a research report looking at, and this is a report about earth, the benefits of urban forest to cities. So I don't want to spend too much time on that citation. But I do want to just spend a minute, just a second, and ask you to take a moment and think about a time when you were in nature. So if you wouldn't mind just softening your gaze and just taking a moment, pick your favorite spot. Could be a spot, could be those woods. But spend a minute, maybe just in your yard. And I want you to just imagine what it looks like, as if you're soaking in the colors and the textures and what you see. Just take a moment and just do that, please, if you wouldn't mind. And then see if you can also get the sounds. Maybe there's birds. Maybe there's wind. Maybe there's the sound of silence. Maybe there's kids playing. Maybe there's just the rustle of the trees. And if you could, just let that soak in just a little bit more into your psyche, as if it's going into yourselves and your bones. And then see if you can get the smell, smell of the trees, the smell of the woods, the grass, the leaves. Just see if you can soak that in for just a moment. And maybe that leads to a little bit of a taste, as if that's just going all the way into your senses. And then the touch, maybe the wind on your skin or the feel of your feet. And I just want to invite you to just a moment and see, just check in with yourself, and maybe it didn't do it, but if it did, just see if that made just a little bit of a shift. Anybody, just a little tiny bit of a shift, maybe a little bit towards well-being or relaxation or anything. Most people do have that, and the reason is because nature has been proven to have significant health benefits for humans. These benefits include cognitive benefits, attention, mental health benefits, reduction in anxiety and depression, improved positive affect, physical health, pro-social behavior, stress, and resilience. This is a growing body of research. It's a multidisciplinary area, and it's growing amongst some of the fastest in the world. And it's because the benefits of nature are profound. But not only that, nature benefits cities. So there have been reports that show that cities that have increased green space have increased home values. People have increased social ties to each other and ties to the community. People with more ties to the community are more likely to support local businesses. So this is also good for local businesses. Businesses can maximize these benefits by providing services to residents that then they can actually build on the nature, but also build a stronger community. And then businesses can continue to maximize this. There are environmental benefits as well with the reduction of flooding. So I'm just here to ask you to please help us save this critical patch of urban forest. Thank you.
Our first meditation public comment, maybe?
I'm a believer, except for my bear encounter this morning, which was not. Which was not calming. Anne Walts.
Local citizens have come together to voice their opposition and their horror to UNCA's insane plan to bulldoze the forty-five-acre urban forest that's just one mile from downtown Asheville. There are more than twelve thousand signers to our petition. Besides the UNCA administrators and developers, there are few clamoring to see this precious urban forest bulldozed and developed. Its development will not add a cent to our tax base. Instead, it'll be a liability and strain on our stormwater and infrastructure and deprive Asheville of all the climate resilience benefits of a mature forest. All Ashvilleans are stakeholders. Asheville taxpayers were critical to the bond dollars in the late fifties and early sixties that actually established UNCA. Every year, NC taxpayers contribute more than three billion to the UNC systems. This forest is the heart of the Five Points neighborhood and used daily by students, faculty, and surrounding neighborhoods. The community you've pledged to serve has come together with a clear unified voice in support of green space on the forty-five-acre publicly-owned urban forest. Especially after Helene and the fires, we don't want another hotel, a soccer stadium, or retail shop to replace a local beloved green space. Today, we're asking you to stand with us, your constituents, in support of our community and our environment. We're asking you to pass a resolution in support of preserving the urban forest. It's not easy to stand up to powerful institutions and to special interests in Raleigh. We're doing it, and it's not too much to ask for you to do the same on our behalf. We're not going away. We're actually getting stronger by the day with different neighborhoods, more Asheville residents, and Asheville small businesses and nonprofits joining us to conserve the urban woods. The time is now to walk your talk. Please embrace conserving this precious urban forest just one mile from downtown Asheville as our own Central Park.
Thank you. Callie Warner.
Good evening. I am a native of Asheville, and I do not live in the Five Points neighborhood. But I, along with everyone in Asheville I speak with, am horrified that this forty-five-acre mature urban. am horrified that this 45-acre mature urban forest is possibly slated for destruction. When Save the UNCA Woods Group started organizing opposition to this possibility, the term "millennial campus" kept coming up. None of us knew what it was, so I'm going to share some of what we've learned. In 2021, the UNCA Board of Governors approved about 210 acres of university-owned properties as millennial campus to enhance research, teaching, and the economic development of the region. The UNCA Revitalization Plan 2021 to 28 states that UNCA will leverage our millennial campus designation to partner with regional leaders on key public-private partnerships. The UMST Act was passed in 1929 to regulate government and business. It's designed to prevent commercial business from operating properties that do not pay taxes. So imagine, if you will, this last remaining urban forest suddenly becoming a soccer complex, a hotel, and small businesses. How does Asheville benefit from this? Excessive stormwater runoff, increased taxes, increased traffic noise, and small businesses in downtown closing from not being able to financially compete. In her article, "Public Universities as Commercial Landlords: Where Do We Draw the Line", Jenny A. Robinson says that the economic benefits to the overall state economy of tax-free, UMST-act-exempt university research campuses are questionable. Not only do such campuses compete with local landlords and reduce the real estate tax base, but the rest of the state is often taxed for at least part of the school's expansion. Once a university receives an UMST-act exemption, there is little to no oversight over business activities on campus. Ms. Robinson is with the James H. Martin Center for Economic Renewal. In 2024, UNCA eliminated ancient Mediterranean studies, drama, philosophy, religious studies, as well as German and French. Will the potential funds raised from the millennial campus be funneled into reinstating the liberal arts programs at UNCA? Programs that have defined the branding of the university? Nope. The funds raised will go into the millennial campus coffers, the public-private partnership pockets, and the university suffers from losing what made UNCA and still makes UNCA such a great place. I urge you to stand with us and save this forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Rayburn.
My name is Heather Rayburn, and I graduated from UNCA in 1993. And I've lived in Five Points for 30 years. And I'm here as well to ask you guys to pass a resolution in support of us as part of your community and constituency. And I know that you don't have any legal designation over this, but it's really hard to do this stuff. And the only power that we have is to, public relations-wise, because the university, it's a new day over there. They're slashing liberal arts, they are not talking to us. After public pressure, they finally said, we'll have a community listening sessions, but you can only talk about how you would like to see millennial campus developed. We didn't even know this millennial campus. But what it is, is they went and they asked for all of their green space to be designated for this loophole where they could do public-private partnerships. You know, they could do labs or whatever. But most of these colleges are taking advantage of this to build things like hotels and retail and that sort of thing. And what it's doing is, and this is coming from Raleigh, who just doesn't like liberal arts, doesn't like Asheville. They send this lady here to slash, 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 show up with excavators in her backyards, no notice. You know, that's not how you treat your stakeholders. We're alumni, we're neighbors, we're voters, we're people who pay taxes. And so we feel like a resolution in support of this precious forest, and it really is. There's nothing like it. For the students, they passed a resolution. It was gorgeous. They talked about how they need this place for their mental health, they need it for their outdoor labs. They came through, they didn't even, there were research plots that they destroyed. They went over somebody else's. It's just been a mess. And people packed the rooms, and the student listening sessions, the faculty and staff sessions, and the community. They put these tables in there, wouldn't let enough people come in. Lots of people wanted to talk, they didn't get a chance. So this is what we're dealing with, and it's not right. And this millennial campus, they incentivized themselves, they could ask for their surface lots to be millennial campus. And they've got plenty of, they've got cleared property on Broadway, they're talking housing. Go for it. You could do, lots of higher housing there on campus. So that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Mejia.
Good afternoon. The last time I was here, I said that help isn't coming. It's something rather scary. But since the last time, the federal government has stopped all funding in western North Carolina for any sort of federal relief aid post hurricane Helene. Our representative Chuck Edwards has thanked the presidency and the administration for cutting funding and for giving North Carolina an opportunity to be self-sufficient. We've been abandoned. We have lots of opportunities here to help, and I've asked you to, and you haven't. I've assumed you didn't want to, or you have business connections. So I went looking, and I found something. Turns out, according to the Asheville City Charter, Article 1, Section 3, "The city council has the right to levy, cause to be laid taxes on all trades, occupants, businesses, amusements, and whatsoever named called, by the amount of which laid shall be collected by the city manager of said city immediately, if the same had not been paid on demand or may be recovered by suit or seizure." It's basically saying that you, as city council, and everybody knows this, have the power to pass a privilege tax on any luxury business, good, individual, in the entirety of Asheville. That is amazing. That is some amazing power, and I'm really wondering why you're not using it. I'm wondering why nobody's written up an ordinance. Now I'm thinking, well, if you're not doing it, why don't I? And that's what I'm doing. Today, I'm announcing the creation of the Civil Protection and Restoration Project. It's a political mutual aid, it's a political mutual aid fund. Working with local community members, we're going to write up the ordinance ourselves. When you come here, I'm going to bring it to you. I want to continue bringing ordinances and actual solutions that can actually help us and our people and protect us from a federal government that doesn't care anymore. But more so, we'll be organized. So when you say no, when you don't help, and when you don't look at me, we can start to ask, how do you impeach a mayor? How do you impeach a city council? How do you fix a system that won't fix itself? I don't know, but I'm going to find out. I really just want you to do your job. The mayor of Newark was arrested by ICE immigration. That's scary. That's the kind of mayor we need, because that's what I'm looking at. So you can join us, you can get out of the position. I'll be back next month, and be back before then. I've got a lot of work to do, and I'm very, very tired. But I'm not going to stop.
Thank you. So I normally don't make comments after a public comment, but I do want to correct two things, and you can take a seat. We are still receiving federal funding for storm relief that has not stopped. And the privilege tax is no longer available to cities or counties in North Carolina. That was eliminated some years ago. So I do just want to correct, in case the public's listening to your comments, I don't want them to believe those two things because those are not accurate. It's a state law. It was passed by the state legislature. So your time is up, and no, I cannot. It is a state law. You can lobby the state legislature, which I did when they tried to, when they first proposed eliminating it. Thank you. Joe Minicozzi.
Hi, my name's Joe Minicozzi.
Can you see that?
Thank you.
Yeah, these are, okay, sorry. Hi, my name's Joe Minicozzi. I'm the owner of Urban 3 based in Asheville and co-founder of the Asheville Design Center and worked on the I-26 project. Way far too long in my life, but I-26, the aerial of the highway, is going to basically go from the face of City Hall. So imagine when you walk outside, a 20-foot-tall, about the width of Sam's Club, going from the face of City Hall to Pritchard Park. That's how long that bridge is going to be. When DOT presented here, and these are three screenshots from the MPO meeting, there are no additional impacts, therefore it does not violate NEPA, and the public involvement was part of this process. Well, that public involvement stems back to 2009. By the way, you all passed a resolution in 1999 to fast-track this project by 2002. The community got involved, and that's how the CCC process got started in 2000. We came on the tails of that. There are over 500 people that were part of that process. This is the meeting notes from October 2009, where DOT agreed to keep the highway under Patent Avenue. So they're part of that agreement. And this is our press release that says that Derek Weaver confirmed that the interstate could be constructed under patent and no additional costs for our alternative Ford B. So they agreed to that. Also, the Chamber of Commerce in 2008, Rick Lotosky, sent out this email to minimize the impact, or minimize the impact. Let's see, minimize the impact, keep the highway under Patent Avenue. So the chamber agreed with that, which is kind of rare that the chamber and the design center agree. But here's the laws. This is the federal code that says for the ATC process, they're supposed to be, whatever they decide is equal to or better than the decision and is not in conflict with previous agreements. So not only is this worse to have the highway up in here, they also went against our agreements. Secondly, the EIS law says that procedures, decisions must be made, you must have all the information before a decision happens. They didn't do the EIS analysis of the flyover before they decided, so they basically violated that law. And then this is their decision on why it's aesthetically more pleasing to put the highway over the top of Patent Avenue. And I'd like to just zoom in right there, that we get to choose the color of the beam, and they're going to put a little city logo on the end of this beam right there. Seriously, it's comic, but when you let engineers decide aesthetics, this is what you get because they don't understand. Now, the law says there's supposed to be a multidisciplinary team. There's supposed to be designers involved, people that understand the design arts, and they clearly don't. So I was trying to come up with an analogy of what they're giving our community, and it's essentially a couch with a toilet in it. Very efficient. You don't have to build a bathroom.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for this evening. Unless there's anything else, we are adjourned. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, never mind. Hold the phone. Closed session. Please.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news. All right, so I move that the Asheville City Council go into a closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Chapters 143 through 318 dot 11A1. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute, Chapters 143 through 318 dot 10E. And two, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the city of Asheville, including on a list of potential economic development incentives. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute, Chapters 143 through 318 dot 11A4.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll adjourn from the closed session.